Okay, Tuesday, February 27, 2018. Town and Monroe's Board of Appeals Meeting. 101, Mine Road, Monroe, New York. In the rise for pleasure. Number two, we have the exit signs right in the back. One on this side. I'm going to, we're going to review the, and approve the minutes for November.
Or you can move that to the end if you want, Jonas.
Okay, we'll move it to the end.
Okay.
Public hearing. Number one, Batillo de Casa Art. 20, zone 23-2018. Section block lot 7-1, 7-1-99.3. Who's here for that matter? The mailings?
Oh, sure. Good.
I mean, the mailings were done?
Yes, they were, and they all came back.
Okay, and it was publicized?
It's in the Times Herald Record, it's been on the Village Board, our board, and the local newspaper as well.
Okay. Okay, so, let's go over, what you here for, what you here for?
Uh, permit, uh, for the shed.
What you should do, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if it's public hearing, there should be a motion to open the public hearing first, and then the public hearing will be opened.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so please explain again for the public.
Sure, um, so, we are looking to put a shed on our property. Um, our lot is a corner lot under the town code, so I technically have two front yards. Um, we're looking to put the shed on the side yard of our property. And, um, so we are looking for a variance, since the setback on a front yard is 50 feet, and we would be looking for, um, a variance of 30 feet, so that we could, uh, put the shed in the desired location.
So that it would be 20 feet from the property line?
Correct, correct, sorry.
It's okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
So the variance is 30 feet.
Correct. From the property line, yes.
Any comments from the board member?
Yeah, I mean, one of, one of the things with something like this, this is, you know, well over 50 percent variance. Um, one of the exercises we usually go through is, are there other places on the property that wouldn't be as much of a variance on there? So, I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, so, um, the way that our property is laid out, for, in order for the shed to be useful to us, um, we can either put it on the side lot, which is technically a front yard, um, so you would be looking at the same variance anywhere along that entire side of our property. Or we could put it at the end of our driveway, which would, one, impact our use of the driveway, but more importantly, then I would need a variance with respect to my neighbor's property. Um, so, in, in order to put the shed at the end of my driveway setback, it would abut his property, and I would need a variance from, for, from him as it relates to our property line. So, in terms of where it's useful on my property, and where it makes the most sense, the location we are proposing makes the most sense for usefulness, and it also is the least impactful to my neighbors.
And that rear, uh, lot, rear property offsets, it's only five feet though, right?
Uh, yes, so, but my dri, so my driveway, the distance from the end of my driveway to his property line is about 20 feet. Um, so, I'd have to set it back at least a little bit from my driveway, so I would be cutting it very, very close to that five feet on his property line. And he would also then get the view of the back of a shed. As opposed to trees.
And on the left side of the property, if you're looking at the front of the house?
Yeah, so that, so that prop, so, well, I wouldn't have access to my driveway, meaning, the items that I'm planning to put in the shed are a snow blower, uh, kids' bikes, kids' cars, et cetera. If I put it at the end of the property over there, I would have to get all of that stuff out of it, pull it up by property line, it's just not a useful place, because I have a fence around my property, so to get the kids' bikes to the driveway, um, I would be traversing my entire property, which is uphill on that side.
Is that in the area where there's like a little nice retaining wall?
Correct, yeah.
Right on the side of the driveway?
Yes, so, so we, we cut out around the side and into the hill?
To the level of the driveway.
Exactly, so it's the level of the driveway, there's a retaining wall proposed to be behind the, um, the shed, it's below grade as it relates to the street, so from the street level, well, and we're also planning to put trees behind there, it wouldn't be visible from the street.
There is some trees over there.
There's some already there, yeah, there's, there's several pine trees already there.
How high would that, would it be from, if you stand on the street, how, how much is it going to be higher than the ground?
Um, so if you stand on Cromwell Hill Road, you would be able to, uh, you'd be able to see the roof. Um, you'd probably be at eye level with maybe the bottom of the roof, so you'd be able to see just the top of the roof. I haven't put a stake in the ground, but it's, the shed is 10 feet tall.
Is there, do any of the plans show the actual dimensions of the shed?
Uh, they do. Um, that is...
That's right there.
It's right in the first tab. Should be in the first tab.
It's on the surveys.
Uh, yeah, and it's on the surveys.
20 by 12.
Correct, and then it's 10 feet tall.
Right, so, so, this, this is, this is from last time you were here, so actually the, that, that, uh, line to the edge of the road is actually to the edge of the property, so that...
The, the line...
That distance is actually 20 feet, it's actually 20 feet, so, so looking for a 30, 30-foot variance.
Right.
Correct, it would be, the shed would be setback 35 feet from the road, um, which I guess is 20 feet from my property line.
Did you have a surveyor mark out that 20 feet, or is that just an approximation?
No, we, I, I did the sketch, but I did have a surveyor come, you would, well, if you went to my property, you'd see I have stakes everywhere.
Okay.
Um, because we had to survey for, uh, the pool as well.
Did you, did you get a dimension by any chance from the, um, uh, the side of the shed that goes up to, uh, the, the edge of your property that closes to Darre Court? I see in the sketch you have 89 feet, but that's indicated to the, to the street.
To the street.
Do you know what the dimension is to the actual property line there?
Hmm, no, but I think that, I think the difference between Darre Court and my property line is probably 10 or 15 feet.
Okay, well, in either event, you see, you, you do show it being 40 feet from the rear property line, so it can be fixed, and it's 20 feet long, so whatever, the reason I'm asking is so the board can be aware of its precise location, and it doesn't kind of vary if it ever left this board and went to the building inspector.
Got it, yeah, so, and you can see, well, the property line, and I can tell you based on where it hits the walkway, where it hits the walkway, which is no longer there, is actually where my fence is, and my fence is setback 10 feet, so, um, it's, that has to be probably at least 15 feet there.
How many cars is your garage, actually, it's a one-story garage?
It's two. Two cars, um, but we have a lot more than two cars at my house at any given time.
Okay. Do you, do you keep two cars in the gar, in the garage?
Uh, we will, our garage right now is full of the stuff that was in our basement, which just got finished, so, uh, we do typically keep both of our cars in the garage. And then, we otherwise have at least two cars at our house, other than our two cars, because we have, um, well, we have two to three, because we have two, two to three nannies at any one time at our house.
Yeah, I was just, you know, on, on some other similar issues, we've had sheds and stables that had to be moved around to optimal spots, and, and I just, I'd like to just talk a little bit more about, if you put it at the end of the driveway, you'd actually probably be close to, I mean, I understand, I understand the concern with the neighbor, but it's still within, still within the zoning regulations. Uh, I'm not sure if that would reach the 50-foot mark, if it was there. No, yeah, I just meant like, if, if they put it here, and, you know, you gotta look at these things and say, is there a place to put it that would not be, uh, require a variance or require less of a variance, just because the 30, a 30-foot variance on a 50-foot requirement is, you know, that's, that's not unsubstantial.
Yeah, so I, I would say a couple of things on that point. So, if you're looking at the, uh, where it says edge of driveway, you're on the survey, right? So, in order to come 50 feet off of the property line that abuts Cromwell Hill Road, um, that 50 feet would roughly put the edge of the shed at the edge of my drive, at the edge of my garage. So, I would now have a shed on the back of my driveway, directly opposite my garage, um, which would impact my ability to use my driveway, because I wouldn't be able to park any cars in front of the shed, and still be able to get cars out of my garage, um, and be able to use, utilize that. And the distance between the edge of the driveway to that property line with my, um, with my neighbor, in order to put a shed that's 12 by 20, so 12 feet deep, setback enough off of the driveway, um, so it's not directly on the edge of the driveway, would be very close to his property line. I wouldn't be able to put it below grade, meaning dig that out, so he would be seeing the back of a shed as opposed to, um, some, some trees and, and, and other landscaping. Um, and beyond that, you know, that, this is, and I recognize that it's a 50-foot vari, a 50-foot setback, because it's technically a front lot, but it's my side lot. Um, and it doesn't impact, you know, one of the things you look at is for a corner lot, that it impacts the ability for traffic, it doesn't impact that at all, uh, because it's setback far enough from the corner. Um, it's barely visible from the road because of the grade where it's set, and the trees behind it. Um, and I think it's aesthetically more pleasing to my neighbors, and whoever else is traveling in the neighborhood, to have it in the location that it's proposed, as opposed to at the back of the driveway where it's not particularly useful for me. It's not aesthetically pleasing for them. Um, and, you know, given that it doesn't otherwise impact the beauty of the neighborhood or traffic, more importantly, um, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that it's a significant variance under the, under the code, um, but, you know, it, it, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense in this particular circumstance. My neighbor is here, I don't know if he has a view, but...
Mike, do you have, uh, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I've got a couple of, uh, observations on this. Um, the first thing is, in looking at the map that was submitted, it's a survey map from 2011.
Okay.
All right, and it's been altered by the applicant to show the proposed location of the shed. The, the importance of that is you cannot alter a signed and sealed survey map, it's against New York State Education Department law. So that's, that's just a technicality, but it's still the legal requirement. Secondly...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt? What's the legal requirement?
The legal requirement is to have this map updated and presented with a updated seal and signature. And that gets to the second part of that. This map is from 2011, it does not indicate the condition of the property at this date. You've since constructed a fence around the entire property that's not shown here, six-foot-high fence. You have construction going on in your backyard that looks like maybe the installation of a series of retaining walls, a pool, and a deck, none of that is shown on this map. And, um, you know, third, so, so that's just the issues with the technical accuracy of the map. The other thing was, you know, in, in your last presentation here, you said that this is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I drove up and down Cromwell Hill Road, I could not find another shed in the front yard along Cromwell Hill Road, so I don't think that's the case. The other thing is, we're talking about a 240-foot, square-foot shed, and you've got a 41,000-square-foot piece of property. You should be able to find an alternative location. I understand your request to have it easily accessible to your driveway, but generally sheds get put in the backyard, and, and you have to go out to the shed, and pull your bicycles out, and pull out your snow blower, and it's not sitting right there in your front yard. That's the piece that, that I'm having a hard time with. This seems to be a self-imposed hardship, not one created by any other means. So that's, all right. And, yeah, that, that's, that's basically my observations on, on this, uh, application. The mapping is incomplete and outdated. Um, the, the shed location, we don't know if it's 35 feet from the property lines, 20 feet from the property line, it wasn't drawn by a surveyor or an engineer. The other thing that's missing on this is that, you know, this should really be a, um, a plot plan, showing the development of the whole lot, it should show the well, it should show the septic system. Those are features on that lot. None of that is depicted on this map, so, I think when they come here and they ask for variances, they should start with an app, application that's complete and accurate, representing the existing conditions.
Can, am I allowed to respond?
Yes.
Sure.
Um, first, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Michael Murphy.
And are you substitute, is that what?
Uh, yes, I'm a ZBA alternate member.
And you need an alternate, because why?
We have five board members, and one is absentee.
But you have quorum.
Mr. Murphy's not sitting, he's not sitting as an alternate member of the board right now, but he is, he sits, and he's permitted at the board's request, they can solicit his input, but doesn't sit as, but he doesn't...
Last meeting, he was asked, he asked if he could...
I'm sorry, I was speaking, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, let me explain. So, uh, I did the legal research on it, and I've determined that the law is that the, i, i, if he's called to sit as a board member because of the absence of a quorum, then he can sit as a full board member. Other than that, he's sitting as a member of the public, and the board can call on him, like it can call on any other person...
Got it.
And solicit his input.
Got it.
But, and, and so that's, that, that's the nature of his input right now.
Okay.
Okay.
And where is the requirement that it has to be an actual stamped survey?
Well, it, it states right here on, on the map, unauthorized alteration or addition to this...
No, I'm, I'm sorry, where, where in, where in the rules does it require that it needs to be a stamped survey?
This is a legal proceeding, you need to submit legal documents that are...
Well, um, okay, well, I'm asking for the, the legal requirement, that it be a stamped survey.
I think the point is it needs to represent the, the conditions that, that we're, we're looking at, so, if, if, if it's stamped by a, an engineer, he's got his license on the line saying, these are accurate conditions here, if it's a, if it's a, a plan that may have been stamped by an engineer based on information within, uh, 2011, and now it's marked up. There's basically, nobody's, nobody's license on the line, and it's not accurate, that's all, you know?
Well, but I, I recognize that. But, in order to apply for a variance, it requires certain documentation. And nowhere, unless you can show me where, does it require that the survey that has to be submitted in support of the application requires it to be a stamped survey. And as for the remainder of the condition of the property, the area that we're talking about, um, and the item that we're talking about is not impacted by the remainder of the property, all of which has permits. But putting, putting the technical accuracy and survey requirement aside, which I would like an answer on, um, there is a shed on Allison Drive, if you're driving on Cromwell Hill Road. Um, there is a home that has technically two front lots, because part of its, one side of its property is on Allison, the other side of its property is on Cromwell Hill Road. Uh, they have a shed, or actually, it's a detached garage, which is even larger than the one I'm proposing, that is not setback 50 feet from Allison Drive. Um, so, I, apologies if you've missed that in your survey of the neighborhood. But beyond that, um, so there is, there is an example directly across the street from mine. Um, beyond that, where, where we are talking about would be barely visible from the street when you factor in the landscaping that's around it. Um, so, in terms of, uh, not fitting in with the neighborhood, um, it, most of my neighbors won't even see it because of the landscaping. So, you know, I, I, I do not think that it would impact the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I stand by that statement.
We're, just, so I know the, the, uh, as far as like options, the, is this, uh, this area, is this where the leaching field is, down over this way?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We have our septic and leach field in that section. I mean, I, I, the, the town code says very clearly that the variance is, um, should be in line with public health, safety, morals, general welfare, all of which I think are satisfied here by virtue of the fact that there is no impediment to the view from the road, from a traffic perspective. And then it goes on to the character of the neighborhood, conservation of property values, um, and direction of building development in accordance with the plan, none of which are impacted here. Um, and it shall not involve substantial detriment to the public good, nor substantially impair the intent purpose of the zone plan. Again, none of which are impacted here.
Now, by looking at this map, we, the, the numbers that are shown are not accurate to the property line. We would like to see more accurate. We, we see 35 feet to the edge of the road, and it doesn't tell us on, on the survey how many feet it's from your property line.
Uh, Mr. Maldonado came out and measured, and I believe that he included that.
And the same thing as, uh, is with the 89, it doesn't give us, and, on the other side, it's, it's 40 to the property line, and on, on the front, it's 89 to the edge of the road. And it doesn't say, we need a measurement to the edge of the property line.
Okay, so as it relates to, um, the 89, um, I mean, I, I think it's certainly clear that we're well, we're well over 50 feet. Um, and Mr. Maldonado did come out and measure in his refusal letter. Um, he said, "The shed is located 20 feet at the north side off of Cromwell Hill Road property line. This is an encroachment of 30 feet from the required setback."
Yeah, that's in, that's in his January 2, 2018 letter that you're referring to, am I right?
Correct. Jonas, it should be in your package from today.
Today's package?
Yeah.
Ms. Batillo?
Yes.
So, I know the pad is in place currently, right?
Correct. Well, it's a, it's a cleared, cleared area with gravel and a retaining wall, where the, the wall around it, yep.
Was, was there any comment made by the contractor or landscaper as to the effect or possible effect of any of the trees surrounding that location?
Uh, what do you mean, that it would...
Would it, would it adversely affect any of the root structure?
No, yeah, uh, so he and I spoke about that, and in fact...
Who is he?
Uh, sorry, um, Land Works, we use Land Works Construction out of, I guess it's between Florida and Chester. Um, so he and I spoke about that, that the pine trees that are there are not impacted, because they're set far enough back, their roots are set far enough back from where we, uh, we built the pad. And then, the large oak tree that's there was also not impacted, because it was far enough away. So, where the current trees are planted are, they are not impacted. And in fact, we would plan to put trees behind the retaining wall between the pines and the oaks, uh, or the oak that's there, um, to further cover up and provide cover. So, the short answer is no, the trees that are there are not impacted, and in fact, we would be putting more.
And that was his professional opinion?
Correct.
And I believe, I was gonna look at this site, so they're landscapers as well?
Land Works, yes.
I know they do masonry work, but they also do, I believe, landscape design.
Correct, landscape design, yeah.
Did they, did they make any comment as to the need to prune any of the trees following it?
Um, I was given, I can, he said we would look at it once the shed is up for, not necessarily for, are you talking on the roadside or the shed side?
Both.
Okay, so, well, so, so on the shed side, we may choose to, to prune the pines a little bit, so the pine needles are not falling on top of, and sitting on top of the shed. I doubt we'll do that, because then the trees would not look full. Um, and as for the oak, we would never touch that tree. I mean, he didn't think that we would need to touch that. I, he, he left the option to me, but I don't, I don't see it.
Anything else? Is there any comment on, from the public? Please come up.
Driveway, house, shit. So this is actually 20, 20 feet, it's supposed to be.
So this doesn't show any of the new things that got done, right? These are, still that patio and hot tub, where now they put in...
Right, this is based on, I believe it was 2011.
And that six-foot fence is on the, so none of this is accurate. And they plan to put it in that... How high, can I ask you, how high is that retaining wall?
Uh, the retaining wall that's there is about five feet. Um, and then the shed would be another five feet above that.
That's to the top of the roof line?
The top of the roof line is 10 feet, yes.
And so there's no landscaping plan on here as far as trees and, or shrubs or anything at this point?
Correct, for, around the shed area, no. There's, there's trees that are there currently.
Right, there's a couple of pine trees.
There's three pine, three or four pines, um, at the ed, end of the driveway, um, that wrap around to the side, and then there is, um, the big oak, which is off to the, to the back of the shed.
Excuse me for the one, we would like to state your name.
Sorry, Thomas Sikorski for Darre Court, Monroe.
I noticed the trees on the left side of the property. I noticed the trees on the left side of the property. Were you looking at the house? Were those planted by you, or were the previous?
The trees to the left.
Looked like some saplings on the left side.
I'm sorry?
On the left side of the property, looked like there were some saplings that were planted.
On the left side of the property.
Right here. Looking at the house?
Oh, to the left, oh, so, there's the big cherry blossom on the corner of the house. There's two ginkgos right in the front of the house. And then, towards the end of the property, there, there's one, there's a mag, a small, very small magnolia that we had planted. But then, there's going to be additional plant, oh, and then there's the white birch that are towards the front of the property. I'm not sure what other trees...
No, I think that's...
You mean. But then, there will be some additional plantings down towards the end of the property, past the white birch.
I'm sorry, could I ask a direct question?
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you gonna replace any of the trees that you took, are you gonna replace any of the trees that you took down where the pool went in?
Correct, yes. So, so, we have the three pines, you know, at the end of the driveway. Then, we're behind the shed here, we're planning to do additional plantings between the pines and the oak. And then, along the back of our driveway, where there used to be pines that abuts the Ammons property, there'll be trees there. And then, behind, behind, well, if you keep going past the driveway, there'll be, the fence will, will go back up that abuts the Ammons property. And those were the only trees we took. The only trees we took down were, were at the end of the driveway.
Well, they extended all the way behind, behind the house, you cut down trees all the way.
Oh, sorry, so where, so yes, okay, so if you're gonna keep, keep going down that row, then yes. So, once you know where the placeet is, behind the placeet, there will be additional trees.
And my only other question is, are, is this it, or are there gonna be other outbuildings?
No, this is it. This is it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Excuse me, any question, you have to direct it to the...
Sorry.
The board. You're only here to give us information.
Okay.
What's going on there, and the question should be done. If you want to direct it, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I think that covers it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the public to say something?
Can you say your last name, please?
A-M-M-O-S.
Thank you.
Take a seat, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a general statement, that the changes that have been made have been tasteful, thoughtful, much investment, much capital, and well communicated. To me, as an example, the, there were trees that we shared to the rear of the property, and Casey, my neighbor, called me and said, "Tom, come out, look at them and see," and I said, "Yes, that's, you know..." So, there's been ongoing communication and a lot of care in communicating the changes. And as I said, I think they're well thought out, a lot of consideration. And she is making an effort to preserve the privacy that she'd like to enjoy, and is certainly, again, investing a substantial amount of money to beautify the house and the surrounding area. And so, in context, yes, there are, you know, changes, significant changes, but, but I have witnessed and participated in, you know, the consideration and communication as a neighbor. And in this case, too, it's, it's an awkward situation that she's trying to adapt to. The rear of the property is extremely tight, and while that is feasible, the parking circle and access to a garage would definitely be encroached upon. So, as difficult and limited as the property, I think she's looking to optimize what she has and where she can put it, and also increase the aesthetics, as challenging as that is, but she's applying the resources to do so. So, you know, in the context of being the neighbor and driving by all the time, there's, you know, as I said, a lot of time, money, effort, and thought that I've seen, and I understand the, the technicalities and they're, and they're meritorious, but in the, in the context, as I said, I think she continues to do the best she can with creating an environment for her and her family to enjoy, while keeping the neighbors involved. And certainly, this hearing is, you know, evidence of that, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
His property would be the one that would be the variance.
Thank you very much for your information. Anybody else? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
All in favor? Aye. Number one, will undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or to nearby properties by granting the variant, area variance?
I say no.
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 No. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the property owner can be achieved by some feasible method other than the, an area variance?
Technically, yes. There is room in other parts of the property.
If I might add, one of the keys on that factor that is in your province to consider is, is the word feasible. Most variance applications involve choices and a balancing of factors, and often, there's other spots where an applicant could put an addition on their house, or could put the improvement that they're seeking approvals for, and the question usually comes down to one, is it feasible for the applicant to pursue? So, that's the, that's the balance, and everybody might have their own view, and certainly, the applicant is making the case that it's not feasible, even though there may be other spots technically she could put it, if I, if I heard the testimony correctly. So, that's for the board to consider, so yes, technically, it could be put somewhere else, is it feasible?
I think in the context of convenience, it's not feasible. Removing convenience, and just from the ability to satisfy less of a need of a variance or any variance at all, it is feasible. But again, one of the things I think that we, we all weigh and consider is the matter of convenience versus feasible, at least in my eyes.
Yep, that's well put.
Okay, are we ready for number three? Set, ready for the next one?
Yes.
Number three, whether the request of the area variance is substantial. We believe it is substantial.
Yeah, I mean, just percentage-wise, you gotta, I think you have to say it is.
Right, and so, that's in the context of the percentage of, of encroachment, right? Or, or what the variance would apply for?
Substantiality can be viewed in any number of ways. One of, one is absolute number of feet, or percentages, if that's the, the code section that's in play. Another one is the actual percentage itself of relief, and it's, often, it's a factor that, certainly, it's not determinative in and of itself, as you all know, but it's also something that the board can take into account, and can take into account things that mitigate the substantiality of it, if there are such mitigating factors.
Well, that's what I, I would say, you know, I'm saying, percentage-wise, by the, just the numbers, it's substantial. In my view, it's, it's offset a bit by the, the grade change, you got the five-foot retaining wall, it's kinda heading back there, so that, that does, that, that does offset the, the substant, huh, again...
But the substantiality as it pertains to the character of the neighborhood and things like that, how, how the offset and below grade would affect that. I mean, I, I view that, it could apply to either. It could apply as a percentage of variance or encroachment, it could also be a comment on the substantiality of its impact on the neighborhood, character of the neighborhood. So, I...
Because it's lower than the grade of the street, won't be that, that substantial, I think.
Right, so, I, I guess, you can't answer yes and no, because in, in, in the, in the context of whether a percentage of the, of the code, you know, or the encroachment is as a percentage of the code, is obviously substantial, it's more than 50% of, you know, in variance. But in my opinion, of its impact on the character of the neighborhood, I, I do not think it's substantial, so...
Right, right, I think what you, what you can look at is the fact that overall, the test that the board is asked to apply is a balancing test, and you're balancing all these factors. So, even though a particular variance might be substantial, might be very substantial in terms of feet or percentage, that in and of itself does not necessarily preclude the granting of a variance, because it's a weighing test, it's one factor, and that's why it's a five-factor test. And then, ultimately, those factors go towards the balancing of the benefit to the applicant against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
And that same balancing applies to answering that one particular factor as well, right? Because you have to answer yes or no, but you have to balance the substantiality to character, or, or size of variance, things like that.
Substantiality is relative.
Right.
And it's relative to a number of factors, and all those factors are within the discretion of the board.
The other, again, I don't know if this, I mean, the zoning code's a zoning code. It's, you know, it says both those side yard and the front yard count as front yards here with the 50%, but, I mean, that kinda comes in, into play, too, that, you know, there's advantages living on a, on a corner, and that's part of the reason you get, you have those two 50 footers, but, again, it's, it's a, it's a larger offset than you would normally need on the side yard, so, I don't know, those don't get rid of the magnitude of this variance, but those are things that, I guess, qualify it a little bit.
Ready for the next?
Yeah.
Can I just, is it...
Yes.
Do we close the, can I ask Ms. Batilo questions, though?
Yes.
Well, the public hearing's closed, so, I mean, you could ask her, but it won't be part of the public hearing record, if that makes sense. It's kind of a oxymoron.
I'm happy to answer whatever question.
So, the plans that were submitted that are reviewed by, by Ben, they state the dimensions of, of the shed, right? Height, width, length, right? So, all that is on record filed, so, you know, that's an official document that's housed within his office, right?
Yeah, if you're concerned about the, the size and the location, is that what you're getting at now? Yeah, I mean, there's a couple ways to look at that, right? One way to look at it is, yeah, Mr. Maldonado has, he has that in his, in his letter, he fixes the location of it as 20 feet from the property line, and then, the applicant submitted the survey, which is not, which has some deficiencies in it, as indicated, you know, and pointed out by Mr. Murphy, but on the other hand, another way to look at it would be, well, you could fix the location of the shed, because you know its dimension, it's 20 foot, 20 foot by 12 foot, and you know that it's 20 feet from the property line on Cromwell, and you know that it's 40 feet from the property line on the back.
And the dimensions are set because they're filed with, with Mr. Maldonado's office, right? I mean, upon filing for permit.
Correct, and I, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, or have the board get ahead of itself, because no vote's been taken yet. But hypothetically, if the board were to look favorably on the application and vote in favor of the application, one thing that I would suggest that the board do is, is place a condition, that it be placed in a particular spot, you know, 20 feet from that property line, 40 feet from that property line, and be no greater than the dimension set for, 20 foot by 12 at a height of whatever, whatever it was.
I'm just thinking, as, as it relates to the, you know, answering these five factors, you know, the comment that Mr. Murphy made earlier about, we're using, obviously, testimony and conversation tonight in conjunction with the plan, which really is an illegal document, or a binding document, whereas, I assume, it's validated based off of what's, what's with Mr. Maldonado's office, because he has the dimensions, the, the location, right?
You're right.
And it matches everything that we're talking about now.
You're right.
Okay.
It's on his letter.
Right.
The dimensions of the shed is on the letter. And the, the set back... Said, he said, the shed is located 20 feet north side of Cromwell.
Got it.
And it's an encroachment 30 feet from the required setback. So, we're gonna take it from there. Okay, number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
I would say no.
No. Whether the difficulty was self-created, which is yes. I'll make a motion to vote on this.
Was the mo, you don't need to make a motion to vote, you can make a motion to approve with conditions or without conditions, you can make a motion to disapprove, and then, if you are making a motion to approve with conditions, you should state the conditions, and then look for a second if there is one.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that it will be at the place where it's written on the letter from Mr., from the building inspector.
So, the, the dimensions and the distances from the property lines are as described in Mr. Maldonado's...
Maldonado's letter.
So, the condition would be no closer than 20 feet to the property line on the Cromwell roadside, and no closer than 40 feet to the rear property line, and should be limited to the dimensions proposed, which is 20 foot by 12 foot, and the height of...
10. 10.
Whatever, whatever that height was.
10 foot, it says.
Foot, six inches.
10, 10 foot.
10 foot, six inches. And it might be good to also condition it upon it not being used as habitable space, certainly. And then, obviously, the, the, had already agreed to that on the record last time, but it wasn't part of the public hearing.
That means no electricity and no plumbing.
Not necessarily no electricity, no, it just can't be used as habitable space, no one can live there.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The variance has been granted.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Next, number two, J Squared Edwards. Z sixteen dash zero one five, section block and lot thirteen dash nine dash one three, one, dash one four.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, who's here tonight for that, this matter?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Michael Morgante, I'm the project engineer for this application for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and to my right is the actual applicant, J Squared Builders, Mr. Paul Edwards.
Uh, do you have the mailings on that?
Yes, when we have them all back.
And the public record, and public, uh, announcement?
Newspaper, and it was in the, filed up, uh, on the board up here, and it was on the board in Town Hall.
Okay.
In Village Hall.
Uh, at the last meeting, we asked for some more information.
I believe two of the main outstanding items you had asked for at the last meeting were for us to contact the fire department regarding, um, the proposed road for servicing the two, uh, lots, which we actually did receive an email from the, uh, fire department, which we forwarded to the Zoning Board of Appeals Secretary. Uh, we have a hard copy of that tonight, if you don't have it for your records.
Well, I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so go ahead, again.
So we, we, we were, we did contact the fire, the local fire department, and we did receive, um, an email back from them on February sixteenth. Um, I'll read that portion of the email to you from the, uh, from the fire chief. Um, it says, "Paul, after review of the plans and looking at the area of interest, two ninety-seven Mountain Avenue, section block and lot number thirteen nine dash thirteen, and two ninety-five Mountain Avenue, section block and lot number thirteen dash nine dash fourteen. Fire department will have no issues, uh, operation in those areas in case of a fire. Uh, please submit my response to the Town of Monroe ZBA, and anyone else that may be of interest." That email was forwarded, uh, to the Zoning Board of Appeals Secretary-
I have it.
-on February sixteenth also.
May I take a look at the hard copy?
Absolutely.
Sorry, I thought I printed them. I know I did.
I'm sure it's in here.
No, it might still be on my desk. I piled everywhere that I-
One of the other items, uh, that the board asked us to provide was, um, evidence that we have contacted, uh, the Mudin' Sewer Basin to obtain sewer permits, and we have those here. Um, we attempted to make copies of this, but apparently it's difficult to make copies of yellow carbon paper. Um, we could circulate these to the board also, if you'd like to take a look at them, but they are the actual permits we have obtained from the Mudin' Sewer Basin.
Yeah, so I, I, I remember we were talking about last time, one of our larger concerns was the access and, uh, operation of emergency vehicles coming in through there. And I guess the idea was, uh, utilizing one of the driveways as, as a turnaround.
Correct.
I, I looked at some information from up there, there's, there's a couple, I don't know about right near there, there's cul-de-sacs, there's one, there's one dead end up there that has the kind of a squared-out, larger area. And, and I guess my bigger concern is what, how, uh, how, how do you make sure that that prop- that, that driveway you're gonna use as a turnaround won't have any cars in it when you, when you need to turn around? You know, like, like if the house next door's burning, and they need to turn around, and somebody's got their, their camper, uh, parked in the driveway, you know, what do you, what do you do?
We, we would knock on their door and ask them to move that vehicle once they put out the fire, I would presume.
Right.
I mean, the, the trick is, can we get the vehicle in to treat the fire?
Right.
The other part of this, can we get that fire truck out of there? We can get it out of there, if there are vehicles parked in the driveway, once they're done with whatever they're doing, fighting the fire, we would have to contact those neighbors and ask them, obviously, they probably will be outside watching the fire at that point, watching this happen, um, but we would ask them to-
If they're home, yeah.
Yeah, we would ask them to probably move their vehicles at that point.
Yeah. Is, is there any, uh, um, you know, space, property restriction to, like, putting in a, I mean, I, I gotta say, this may, maybe I'm asking something that's out of, out of bounds here, out of your capability, but, uh, you know, I, I see the ends of roads enlarged, and I'm thinking that's for, partly for emergency vehicles, and there's other ones in that neighborhood, you know, any reason not to do that here?
Well, we can, let me just pull the plans out. I believe that at the end of the road, um, is the dividing line between the Town of Monroe and the Town of Chester.
Right.
And the topography down there is not necessarily conducive to trying to build a proper cul-de-sac, um, or even possibly a T-turnaround. Um, it just seems as though using the topography associated right now with the two lots, um, the, the easiest, um, methodology to provide fire truck access and turnaround would be that neighboring property. Uh, the fire department chief obviously had no issue with, um, that proposal, as evidenced by an email that's before his board. Uh, we utilize the same situation again on the Catskill Avenue side, um, where we actually didn't really have much room for a turnaround the other end, just the topography on that side was pretty steep also.
Okay.
So it was an acceptable methodology to the town.
And how would, uh, how would you, uh, would it be through, uh, something attached to the deed or something, where somebody couldn't change the dimensions of their driveway? You know, I mean, how, how do you make sure that, that stays like that, and people maintain it? I, that, that's my, that's-
And that's a fair question. We could put it as a condition of the resolution of approval, we could put it as a condition or a note on the map. Um, we could certainly do something like that to kind of, uh, enforce it somehow, or to at least give it more credence.
Is, is there a proposal, you know, when the, uh, the development is being done on those two lots, to widen the road, to cut back any of the, any of the, the overgrowth in that road right now? 'Cause I, I, I was reading the email, you know, it, it looks like he reviewed the plans. Did, did John go out and see the actual site? Or, this was based off, it looks like he, he reviewed the plan.
I think he said he mentioned both, and that, that he went out for the site and reviewed the plans. I thought-
I thought I saw it said, uh-
I can't speak for the fire department chief, but I would presume he did.
Yeah, looking at, after review of the plans, and looking at the area of interest, I mean, that could be interpreted as reviewing plans, looking at the area that's in the plans of interest, or actual seeing it, 'cause the only reason I say that is, you know, I, I have a small SUV, um, and I went and visited it yesterday, or, um, yeah, yesterday. It was wet. I mean, that, that pulling straight down there, and even just backing my car out, and I ain't pulling any driveways or anything else, that's a really difficult road. I mean, that's a narrow, private road, there's a ton of overgrowth into it, um, you know, obviously, it's, it's, most of it is dirt, so, is, can you comment on what type of improvement would be made to that private road for?
So, so what we are showing to the Zoning Board of Appeals right now is essentially, um, an improvement that, uh, you know, extends the entire frontage of the two lots in question. Um, we would widen that section to eighteen feet there. On average, the road is roughly, the existing gravel roadway's about twelve feet wide.
Can you show me, I'm, I'm-
Yes, absolutely. It's okay, approach the board.
If you can, I'd ask that you identify the plans that you're showing the board by, uh, by, uh, title, as, with as much specificity as you can, because it may be that, um, we, we want a clean record of what's being submitted, and if there's conditions that the board wants to place, um, to be sure that it's, you know, in accordance with the plan, dated such and such, uh, whatever it may be. So please identify it with particularity.
Yep. So I, so I guess one of the things I'm looking for commentary on is, where does, 'cause it, uh, it, from what I recall, it's at that dead end side, is where it starts to get pretty airy, so that's these first, is it these first four lots?
So the road narrows more right here, it's a little wider back here, it fluctuates between twelve and fifteen feet wide, and then the-
This is up to the dead end side, I can see here. Right, so.
I have a scale on it, so we can actually-
The drawing, this is the drawing, uh, it's a residential site plan.
Yes, so right now, we're looking at sheet two of four, it's entitled Residential Site Plan. Um, in particular, this has got more information out of the topography and actual designs for the road, and the, the roadway, on a forty scale, right here, the road is roughly twelve feet. Um, over here, the road is about fourteen feet. Down here, at one of the narrowest ends, it's about almost twelve. So it ranges between about twelve and fifteen feet wide from here, all the way up. Towards the end over here, obviously, it's a lot bigger, it's probably closer to twenty feet. What I'm proposing, this hatch section over here is twelve feet, I'm sorry, eighteen feet.
Is the widening it to eighteen?
I'm widening it to eighteen feet from here to there.
Is there any proposal for this area to vote?
We don't have anything proposed right now, um-
If this holds, if I recall, I mean, on either side, I think it's different points on this road, right?
Correct, I mean, this has been a condition of that road for, I couldn't say how many years, but I would say more likely decades. That road base is probably very well compacted, because it's been there for a very long time, with traffic going over, with, whether it be vehicles, snowplows, whatever the situation may be. There are no, obviously, we're not proposing anything before the board right now to repair or to even widen that section of the road. There's a homeowners agreement that's in place right now, so if we were to propose any upgrades to this road, we would need to, number one, get an okay from the neighbors, and number two, to have some kind of monetary compensation for it. I don't think that the applicant would necessarily be against it, I think it would just require some assistance from them, and acceptance.
And what's the agreement to maintain the road? Is there one in place?
I have to defer to the applicant on that.
I don't, I don't think there's a written, uh, agreement in their deeds, but they-
They're like-
I don't think there's a written agreement in their deeds, but they do have a, a verbal agreement, and the residents on that road have all been there, I believe each one's been there at least twenty years plus. And, um, what they indicated to me was they weren't interested in signing on to any road maintenance agreement I created, because they felt that the verbal agreement they had worked well for them to this point.
Where's the driveway across the street? It's like a kind of a small cul-de-sac, like a driver going in. With the dead end, as we're- Right, right, like the end, like to the, to the left.
If you look at the existing conditions, maybe you can see that a little better. So right there-
I'm driving up the road, and I see towards the left, there's a driver going into the neighbor across the street, and like a little turnaround over there.
No, these are the backyards, these houses over here.
Yeah.
These are all backyards, it's like cool and stuff over here.
Okay, so I'm-
So the road ends right now, currently, right there.
So, for the record, if you could, again, my job is to make sure the record's clear, one of my jobs. Um, the, the plans that we're up here talking about, it looks like that there's four sheets.
Correct.
Right, could you just describe and be more specific as to what each of these four sheets are that you're submitting to the board?
Absolutely, so right now, we have four sheets before the board. Sheet one of four, um, is depicting the existing conditions of this vicinity of Mountain Avenue, which just shows existing topography, property lines, um, town lines, town dividing lines, uh, for the most part. It shows some neighboring wells, it shows some existing driveways. Uh, sheet two of four is, uh, the actual proposed site plan before the board, which shows the layout of the two proposed dwellings on the subject lots, um, their connection to the existing forest main that's along sewage forest main that's along, um, Mountain Avenue, it's showing some wells in the back, some drainage measures that we are proposing on each lot.
Could I interrupt, and also just ask, when you talk about what each one is, would you give the last revised date, so?
Absolutely, sure. So, sheet one of four is dated three two sixteen, March, March second, two thousand sixteen. I believe they are all, sheet one through four, um, dated March second, two thousand sixteen. Uh, reason being is that we had prepared these plans two years ago, prior to the moratorium taking effect, um, and now that the moratorium has, um, been completed, we are now before the board with these plans, proposing them. Um, so all of the plan sheets are dated, uh, March second, two thousand sixteen. Sheet number two, again, is showing the, um, existing conditions, but now with proposed dwellings, driveways, uh, potential turnarounds for fire truck access on the, uh, one of the lots, extension of the road, the gravel road, proposed pump stations for sewage disposal, uh, connection to the existing forest main for sewage disposal along Mountain Avenue, proposed wells, zoning setbacks, drainage measures, um, and some minor grading on each site.
That forest main's going right down the road?
Correct.
And, and it's already, that trunk's already in place?
Yes, it should end somewhere around these two lots, right here.
So, it, it, it ends?
It currently, the, the, the end of the forest main, we somewhere between these two lots right here.
Okay, so you'd be extending the existing forest main?
Correct, yes. We would create, we would build a new forest main-
Right.
-to connect somewhere in this area to the existing one.
Okay.
And we would have pump chambers in each of these lots, so that we can pump the sewage uphill.
Can you just comment again, what the, the variance you're seeking from the board?
The only variance we're here for before the board is for a two eighty-eight variance, because we don't have a public town road here, so we don't have frontage along a public town road, and as such, we need to request a two eighty-eight variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Zoning bulk regulations, everything else that pertains to these particular parcels, I believe we meet the zoning criteria.
You don't need any other approvals from the planning board, it's not site plan, it's just two single family homes.
These are, these are existing residential lots, yeah, existing real property.
So, so this is all, I think we mentioned this last time, this is all, it's not, the planning board's not looking at this, building inspector is-
Just this would be handled through the Zoning Board of Appeals for the two eighty-eight variance, and the building inspector for individual plot lanes.
This has also been sent to the Town of Chester, 'cause the one property is on the border. I sent everything off to them, I've heard nothing back as of yet.
How about Orange County Planning? Do we get it off to them, and if so, what date, and has thirty days gone by?
I don't think it's gone to Orange County Planning.
Oh.
Yes, it did.
I, I thought, 'cause we, I thought you had sent me your draft letter-
It's not letting me in all of my files on the computer.
It needs to be referred.
This computer's definitely having problems up here at the senior center.
Having issues.
Yes, for the last month. Um, but I will verify the date, and, no, yeah, 'cause I had two sets that I mailed out for you. One was to the Town of Chester, and then they asked for everything in PDF, 'cause they don't deal with paper.
So, a- as a matter of housekeeping and, and, uh, procedure, uh, the board's got to, the, the, the referral has to be made, and thirty days have to go by, because they're given thirty days to respond. If they respond within the thirty days, then the board's free to act. If, uh, if thirty days has not yet gone by, from the time that the referral was made, uh, the board should not act, because it hasn't taken into account any comments made by the Orange County Department of Planning, if any, and either accept their recommendations or, or address them in some appropriate way. So unless we know the date that it was referred, and we know definitively the thirty days have gone by-
It was over a week before Paul got me the new plans, so they were sent out within a day or two of those plans.
Do we, do you know the date, though?
Right after the zoning, our last meeting was January twenty-third, so I'd say by the end of January, they probably went out, so we probably have another week before we'll hear. Town of Chester, they were having their board meeting the day I sent it, and she said she'd get back to me, I just made myself a note to call her tomorrow.
Yeah, a- out of an abundance of precaution, I think it would be best for everybody before the board acts.
But I haven't, definitely not heard back from the DPW.
Keep the public hearing open for, for one more-
Mm-huh.
-meeting to, just in case Orange County Planning, in case it hasn't been thirty days, in case they have a comment letter that's on its way, or comes in the next couple days, so that the board can take it into account and address it, if, if necessary.
Yeah, 'cause I definitely, I didn't think to call Megan to say-
I wish all we could have proposed the public hearing, but not take action until you receive documentation.
The problem, the problem with that, with Orange County Planning, is that if, if they make a recommendation that this board disagrees with, this board may override it, um, with supermajority, and they have to state the reasons for the override, and if they're gonna, if they're gonna do so, they should probably discuss it, um, at a public hearing, open to allow people, uh, uh, including the applicant, to weigh in on whether those things- people, including the applicant, to weigh in on whether those things should be overridden or to comment on it. It may be that the Orange County Planning says something that's, that you disagree with as the applicant, and you might want to address it with the board. So I think it would be prudent for everybody to keep it open, even though delay is not your friend because you've been delayed, and the moratorium has set you back. So I recognize that. But without the actual date and knowing 30 days, I think it would be imprudent to do anything else.
Any other questions the board may have about the plans?
Yeah, I was just wondering about the, the nature of the, the road surface that'll be in place there.
So what we've shown now is a typical 12-inch-deep gravel road. But in talking with the applicant, the reality is we're probably going to need to put some type of a crush shale base on this to really have proper subbase so that vehicles can get in and do their work, construction vehicles, that is. We'll probably have something like that associated with a crusher run on top of it. So it actually would probably be overbuilt from what I've shown on the plans here. It'll definitely be a sturdier gravel road, so to speak, than even what I'm proposing.
If I might, I think, just addressing one of the things that, I think one of the board members was addressing earlier, how would you propose to give the board comfort level that the, obviously, you're proposing a number of improvements to that area right in front of the two properties, as you've detailed to the board. But I think what the concern that's been expressed is that bit where you get to that newly improved area. How, what condition or conditions or, or other mechanism would you propose to give the board comfort level that, that that area is going to be maintained, to allow a firetruck or emergency vehicle to get from the town road past that area that you don't really have control over to the area that you're planning to improve? Is that the concern that I, I think I heard you?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to get, you know, agreement from the applicant. But again, we can place conditions in notes and include those in a resolution that this board would provide to us that we can control where we can control, which is the area in front of these two lots.
Right.
And we can put conditions on that, that the road needs to be maintained there. But we cannot speak for the rest of the, the landowners along Mountain Avenue. There's not much we can do to have them enforce anything with regard to the condition of the road. They have their own verbal agreement that's in place, which is what's in place, and we don't seem to be able to sway that.
And those, those other lots, they were created before, before the code or before, have any of them gotten 280A variances themselves?
Every house on this road would have to have a 280A variance.
Right, right. I was just wondering, I mean, this may be beyond what you need to do or whatever, but there may have already been, just what we're talking about discussed and maybe a requirement when these other lots were proposed for development.
Right. Or, or they may, they may preexist that, that requirement. I don't know what date, you know, town law section 280A was enacted. But I mean, it's possible that they predate that or?
If I would estimate, I would say they're more than 30 years old, most of the houses, all of the houses on that road. There's, there's nothing that's been built in the last 25 or 30 years, in my opinion.
It's just, you know, and I know that you used it as a, as a comparison, as an example, but Cats, right, Catskill Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, Catskill Avenue is a completely different animal, in my opinion, than what we see on Mountain Avenue. I mean, Catskill Avenue was.
There's a reason the cat of them all the way. But there's a reason for that because they ended up owning most of the lots on Catskill Avenue. At least half of that road was already paved.
Right.
So we went in and really only needed to pave a small section of the road, which was from the extent that was already paved down to where we were. But how many did you end up building it? Five?
No, we, four, four houses on Catskill Avenue. But 80% of the road was paved. We just extended the other 20%. It, it made sense and it was, you know, the best marketable thing we could do.
That's the reason why you see that the way it is.
Right.
I mean, we can't come here before the board and offer up to pave the entire road. It's just not economically feasible. There'll never be another lot built on this entire road if that's the condition that the board is looking for.
Again, and, I mean, I'm not commenting on conditions or anything. You know, at this point, especially, you know, for the board, just where my head's at initially on this is, it's, I'm sure this is going to be beautifully manicured and exacted to the dimensions that you state, and it's going to probably be overkill for what that gravel road actually needs to be. It's getting to it is, I mean, I, it's a four-wheel-drive truck, and before I even pulled down onto this, I was worried about backing up and being stuck because it's, it's a pretty rural road.
I, I could, we could ask the applicant if they'd be willing to do some minor brush clearing along this. I mean, that much I think we could probably offer because I know it's a little overgrown there and whatnot. But in terms of maintenance and upgrade of the entire length of that, that road is a burden. I don't think that's fair and equitable.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing.
And that's, and, and, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
And that may be, and that may be, very well be an unfair burden to place on the builder. Again, speaking for myself, the only, what I would like to see then to make me feel more comfortable about it, and we can't force John or any of the other officials from, you know, emergency services to actually go there, but it's a much different story looking at a plan than physically being on the road. And if, you know, I'm comfortable if he has done a site visit, has driven down that road, and he's comfortable with the state of it, you know, then I would weigh that in place of maybe some other improvements to the road. It just appears based off of, you know, and again, it's rule for interpretation, but I interpreted it as he reviewed the section of the plan, you know, the site of the plan, the area, looking at the area of interest on the plan, I don't see any issues. Well, of course, he doesn't have any issues because the.
Could you read that section again?
It says, Paul, after review of the plans and looking at the area of interest, 297 Mountain Avenue, and he gives the, the lot numbers, the fire department will have no issues, operation in those areas in case of fire. So I interpret it as, in looking at the plan and this area of interest within the overall plan, I see no problem. And I don't, I mean, it's, he's looking at a, a well-laid-out road that meets all the specifications, a driveway that allows for a turnaround. That's a much different story than him saying, I went, I physically visited the road in question, and I see no concern.
So this meeting is going to be held over to next month? And between now and then, we'll contact the fire chief and get some clarification on whether or not he had a site visit?
Yeah.
And that should satisfy, I think that's.
If he had eyes on.
At least, yeah, in my opinion.
We'll do that.
I can't say to the rest of the board, but if.
That's fine. We'll do that.
During that time period, if he was to, to put in, on the record that he physically visited and sees no, no issues. The only other question I have for, for the board, that covers the fire department, you know, the ambulance is a pretty sizable vehicle as well.
Smaller than the fire.
Yeah, if you can handle a fire truck, you can certainly handle.
If the fire truck makes it, then ambulance will.
So, right, okay. Good point.
So if, if the fire chief is going to be comfortable getting there, then yeah.
Then the ambulance is.
I will speak to John as well.
Okay.
And see what he has to say.
Make sure he sees the road.
Yeah, I will talk to him.
An ambulance should be able to turn around in a regular 12-foot dimensional driveway.
They bring up a good point. If, if the fire trucks, you know, and, and the chief is not, doesn't have any concern, then obviously it would be no issue for the other ambulances. So in place, right, while we're waiting for, you know, the, the county to weigh in, it should leave sufficient time for him to.
If, if you would, if you go back to the fire chief and you have him write something up to clarify it, it's probably best practice to have him do a letter that he signs rather than send the email. So if, if he will and if he can?
We can, we can ask.
You can ask.
Yeah, he's doing it usually. He's done it in the past.
He did it in the past.
Yeah.
No, he did it for us on Catskill Avenue.
Yeah.
Different, different fire chief.
Different fire chief, yeah.
Okay, does.
We can ask, we can ask for a formal letter.
Yes, definitely.
Fire department letterhead.
Yeah, and just, you know, so that way I'm, I'm saving you from having to go back around the track again on it. Yeah, I, I would ask him, again, we can't force him to do anything, but I'd ask him to comment specifically, not only on, you know, because there is no road there now, so he's not going to be able to drive down, you know, the undeveloped area. I'm looking for commentary specific to the, the roadway that's there now, leading up to the part that would be developed. Because that, that's, in my eyes, that's the area of concern, not the undeveloped section, which would follow the plans as you lay out. It's the roadway leading up to it.
And, and since we are going to, it looks like we're going to put this meeting over, one thing I would ask or suggest, that if you're, if you have interest, maybe come with a proposal with some wording for some conditions that address some of the concerns that you've heard from the board, to give the board comfort level to the extent that you can with wording on the things regarding access and maintaining the driveways that, whatever that issue was that came up earlier.
Yeah, I was upstanding before the board, so I didn't write any of those notes down. So maybe we can go over them real quick again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was basically, how do you maintain, what type of agreement would you have in place? How do you maintain that?
We, yeah, we'll put something on there that suggests that the two lots are responsible for maintenance of the area of improvement.
Right.
Of the exten, I should say, the, the road, the extension of the road.
Right.
We did that on Catskill Avenue as well. We did, with the deeds, we put maintenance agreements that we agreed to maintain those portions of the road. Obviously, we couldn't, you know, be responsible for everybody, but they had a verbal in place and it satisfied the board at that time.
So that's a perfect example. The things that you did that, that are one-to-one comparisons that you could do here, bring those before the board if you can, please.
Maintenance agreement, yeah. But also maintaining, you know, the, you know, the two driveways, one's going to be a larger size, that that would be a requirement on that property that has to, has to be maintained.
It would be, you know, if you guys should approve it, it'd be, it would be part of the, of the, the, the plan.
The approved plan.
So we'd have to build it accordingly to, to get a, a C.L.
Right.
You know, that's what we did on the other street.
Right.
And if you look on Catskill Avenue, you'll see the second-to-last driveway has a very wide apron. I think it's like 60 feet or something.
So if somebody, somebody went to, I'd say, 10 years from now, somebody says, ah, man, I don't like the way this driveway is, would they have to go in front of the building inspector? And they'd review that and say, sorry, you know, you can't because this was a requirement for an emergency vehicle?
Your, your resolution is going to reference these plans. These plans are going to be on file with the town. So the building inspector will be able to refer to these plans, look at the resolution that this board creates, and at that time, enforce whatever notes and, I mean, there's a firetruck diagram on there, turnaround. So, I mean, it's pretty obvious what the intent of the driveway is on that one lot. We'll, we'll consistently memorialize it with a note on the map.
And typically, what we would do is put a, put a condition on the, on an approval, if an approval would be forthcoming, that the property shall be improved in substantial compliance with the plan dated such and such and submitted as part of the zoning board application. That's one of the reasons why I was asking him to identify the plans by, by number, so it's in the record and we can reference it.
I'll make a motion to put over this public, uh, public hearing for the next month.
I was just going to ask Mike if you had any, any thoughts.
Well, I, I think you hit a lot of the major issues about this, you know.
No, that Mike, okay.
You gotta share.
I, I think you hit a lot of the major issues about this in terms of how do you deal with this private, this private turnaround, this T-type turnaround? You know, should be, there be signage on the property? Should there be an easement in the deed restricting this property, that, that portion of the driveway to be utilized as a, you know, firetruck turnaround? I mean, that's one way to ensure it gets carried on. These maps, nobody's going to see them again. You know, they're going to go into the file. So, so that's, that's my one concern with the easements and, and the firetruck turnaround. How do you protect that and maintain that into the future? And I think an easement might be appropriate. But I defer to the council on that. The other thing is that the, the plans that we received from the applicant in this application, it was partial cuts from a set of drawings. There was no title block or, or signatures on it. I see he does have a proper set of plans, so the application should be corrected, and that, that should be part of the file because nobody on this board has seen this set of plans until tonight.
We did have this set of plans here at the prior meeting. We did submit a full set of plans to the ZBA. Let me finish. We did submit a full set of plans to the ZBA two years ago. Unfortunately, those plans were lost.
We, we did it again after the last meeting. I gave it to Noreen that week, and she distributed it to the board.
Okay, yeah, so.
While it's forwarding it to Chester and Orange County.
Okay, I.
I do have a couple of sets in the office. I.
So we have, actually, we submitted everything.
Because that was one of the comments at the last meeting, that you didn't have a full set of plans. So I did go out and make, I made copies and I submitted them like following.
That, that was one of my concerns because, you know, the other thing is, you know, you're, you're talking about improvements to this private, private road. You know, who's going to inspect those improvements, make sure that they're all done in accordance with the agreed-upon plan? Should that become the case? I guess that's, that's about it. It's mainly the easements and, and, you know, to preserve the firetruck answer. The, the fact that this road is in much worse condition than all the rest of the surrounding roads, and you're only improving the last 200 feet of a 7-foot, 100-foot-long road, that's concerning. You know, the, the reason being is, you know, four years from now, when these homes are built, and they're half-million-dollar homes, and people are driving up and down this beat-up dirt road in their new Mercedes, where do they go? They come to the town to complain about the conditions of the roadway. So that, that kind of complaint ends up at the town. That's why it's important that these roads be constructed and maintained in a reasonable manner. And I don't think that we've covered that here yet. I mean.
Again.
How do you get around that?
I, I would suggest that the applicant would be willing, but there needs to be some assistance from the existing residents that are in that area. It doesn't seem that that's been the case.
Existing residents aren't looking to build new homes.
What's that?
The existing residents aren't looking to build new homes. They already have their homes, and their homes may predate the.
And apparently there, and apparently that existing gravel road has served them well for 40 years. So I'm not sure what the answer is there, but I think that if we could have some kind of assistance from them, you have someone who's willing to try to help out. But in his discussions with the neighbors, that doesn't seem to be the case. They have whatever their verbal agreement is, it's in place. It's worked for them for 30, 40 years. I'm sure that over the last 30 or 40 years, whoever the fire chief has been has actually gone down that road. Most fire chiefs know every single inch of road in their town. I would imagine they have to. I mean, those are the answers I can give you that, that are just practical and common sense right now. That's all I can say.
The, the other thing that would make me feel better about this application is to have the town engineer review it. And if he's comfortable with all of the construction details, how that construction is going to be carried out, and that we're not creating any drainage problems by doing this, then, then that would, you know, in my eyes, that that would be sufficient.
I don't.
Without that input, you, you don't know. Nobody's done the review of the drainage here, other than Mr. Morgante, who is a licensed professional engineer, and I trust his opinion. But these things, you know, there's a series of checks and balances to ensure everything gets done correctly. And, and, you know, at the zoning board of appeals level, I don't think we have those tools.
Well, that, that's been our, that's really, I think you guys have addressed a lot of, a lot of our concerns to the extent you can and what's in your control. That stretcher road is, is, is the issue, and it's what we're, you know, we're dealing with all around here because it's not, it's not town road, you know, and, and it's being kind of used as one.
I would take no exception to what Mr. Murphy said. However, having said that, we are here for just a 280A variance. I would suggest that the building inspector has concerns with regard to the construction details, the design layout, any of the drainage. At that point, I would put it to his purview to want to refer the plans to the town engineer for review. I believe that's how it should be handled.
Okay, we're going to hold it over to the next month, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Tony.
Thank you.
Next issue on this, on the agenda is 557 Springs Road.
Before we get to that, if I just wanted to ask, Noreen, are you able to get a copy of the 280A variance issued for the Catskill Avenue or Catskill Road application? Is that findable?
Possibly. I will do my best and look for it.
Is it Mr. Morgante? Is that how you say your name? Do you, do you have a copy or does your client have a copy of the, the variance issued by the town years ago for the 280A variance on the Catskill Avenue? We very well should. I'm sure it's part of your records also. I'm sure it is, but if you, if you can easily put your hands on it, maybe you could transmit it over to the clerk so the board can take a look at that as well. Oh, that would be fantastic. Thank you. I want to look in the office as well. Thank you.
Okay, new business. 557 Springs Road, 025-2018, section block lot 1-1-11.22. Okay, who do we have here tonight? Identify yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Joel Mann. I'm here behalf of the applicant on 557 Springs Road. I'll give a little brief history on this property. This was already before the zoning board in begin, the end of 2015, beginning of 2016. It was right before the moratorium and the town went in. It was right before the moratorium in the town went into effect. And at that time, there was a different zoning on that property and the variance was completely different. So in fact, things has changed. Now, at that time, this property was R3 zoning, residential RR3, 3-acre. The property size, in fact, was only its pre-existing non-conforming 40,000 square feet. So close to an acre, a little bit less than an acre. The request of the variance was to point out and have this property looked as all the neighborhood properties were in fact, like all the properties across the street and the whole area, or actually was at that time R1 acre. So the variance request was actually that my all proposed, the proposed building and all improvements are in conform with the R1 district. So it was a list of variances what I need, but the concept was to look at it at that point and in fact, it will time the neighborhood character look and everything will be so. We have, we was before like approximately, I think about two meetings. There was left one technical open question, but unfortunately, at the next meeting, the moratorium was already in effect and we couldn't proceed with that application. Now, the town has changed the zoning in this whole area. This is now in the SR10 district with, so that means that if we have sewer, we can have 10,000 square feet lots. Without sewer, it's need to be actually one acre. That's another change, actually, what happened from the old zoning to the new zoning. This whole area was R1, like not this property, but all the surrounding properties. And the R1 required, the size for the R1 requirement was 40,000 square feet. And that's basically how all the lots, if you will look on the Elroy subdivision, that's including Mountain View, Raywood, Seven Springs, it's basically, it's 40,000 square feet lots. But I don't know the reason exactly of this change, that when they changed to SR10, without sewer, it's need to be 43,000, it's need to be a full acre, 43,560. The problem is actually this made all properties in this area non-conforming now. So this is actually one of the variances I'm hearing now tonight, is that this property's not just pre-existing non-conforming, but missing a couple tile, about 3,000 square feet. The next variance is that now I am actually complying with all the setbacks, what actually was needed a variance at that time, but now it's 50 feet in the front, 30 feet in the side. We have actually 31 feet and the rear, we need, if remember, it's about six, the rear yard, we need 60 feet. We have the 60, we have 30 feet on one side, 35 feet on the other side. It's an average of total of 65 feet. So we have 34.5 and 31.1. So total, it's 65.6. The only item we're not complying in the bulk table besides the non-conforming is the lot coverage. At that time, and we were in complying with the lot coverage because the R1 zoning district, in fact, and actually there exist a lot of houses in this area, it was 40% lot coverage. And that's like if you will go on Raywood Drive, next street, you will see houses with lot, with, actually, at that time, there was a single-family with accessory allowed. So there were single-family with accessory parking lots, like for four houses, there were on Raywood, there were a couple big houses. So I'm not asking here for any, for accessory apartment, even this was allowed by the code at that time, but in fact, the owner doesn't need it. He just want to, actually, I want to give, I will explain to the board exactly what the owner wants to do and how it will fit into the property. So now the coverage is, now it's 20% and.
The coverage with the existing house?
The coverage with existing house is 20. Actually, the required coverage according to the bulk table is only 15%. The existing coverage already is exceeding, it's 22.5, and with the proposed action, it's going to be 36.6%. Now, if you look on this site plan, there is an existing small house on this property and what the owner wants actually to relocate and to renovate and add, in fact, it's adding a proposed addition, but in fact, the whole house will be relocated into the addition and the existing house will be just like some accessory rooms attached, a part of the main house. That's the concept of this house. And actually, I showed the plan, the plans are before the building inspector and he told me it's everything, it's in compliance, it's a single-family house and you can see it very clear. There is an existing driveway on the right side of the house and we're proposing a new driveway in the left side where the new garage and the new main entry for the house will be. We have existing features on the side, like an in-ground pool in the back. There is like a small pound, there is concrete walkways in the back of the house. There is like a concrete patio in the front, whereas using up the lot coverage. So in the proposed house, we just did the minimum. We did a footprint where it's feasible and works together with the house. And we did the driveway in the front, just the minimum, to get two parking spaces with access to our garage. Possibly, in just looking now, we can maybe eliminate the two parking spaces because we have actually a parking on the right side of the house. The only thing what we want to have actually is access to the garage and a little bit, a little area for turnaround. So if he's coming out from the garage, he can turn around. So we can narrow a little bit that proposed, where the words proposed driveway is on the plan. So now the other option was turn down the existing house and take all this square footage and build it up from new, but doesn't make sense. We have, there is an existing house. Why not use the existing square footage and not need to rebuild that square footage into the new? We can make it, in fact, it's two-story, we can make it smaller when we incorporate it into the new building, but it's the last option, where someone has something existing to tear it down. So that's why we are here for the board tonight and I'm willing to answer any questions from the board members.
So the existing, the existing building, you got changing the footprint of that at all, right?
No.
Okay, that's staying the same.
Yes.
Adding this on.
There is existing internal renovations to, from.
Right, but the footprint's the same.
Footprint is the same, yes.
And so all your setbacks are okay, so it's really just area.
Lot coverage.
It's just the lot coverage.
Correct. And the non-conforming part from the pre-existing non-conforming part of the lot, that it's.
What was the pre-existing non-conforming?
It's one acre, it's required to be one acre and it's only .93 of an acre.
And before, I, you know, you know the old regs better than I do. The R1 was, what was the required area for that?
40%.
40% of that, but I mean, was it an acre?
Oh, the required area for the property size was 40,000 square feet.
40,000?
Yeah.
Okay, so less than.
Less than, actually, I think this is 40,000 something, additional.
In the old code, this is right before the enactment of the new code, was the coverage was permitted in R1 at 40%?
40%, correct.
So you were in compliance prior to the change of the code?
Correct.
And it's out of compliance now with the lot coverage because it's without sewer?
Without sewer, correct. I, I'll tell you the truth, I'm not sure with the sewer, I don't know if someone has the zoning book here, what the coverage is with the sewer.
Actually, it doesn't make a difference to this location. You have no sewer anyhow.
Right, but it has, I think it's, if I remember, it's 25%. So more than the 15, but I'm not sure if it's.
So your leach fields are over here to the south?
Yes, we have an existing leach field approximately where the new dwelling is, but this is a new leach field, already did soil testing, everything is done, completed.
And if you had to expand that, let's see, that's a soil expansion absorption field. You'd be getting close to your pool here. I mean, that's the balance here.
Yeah, that's right.
The reason there's all this coverage, especially with a leach field, is they fail sometimes.
Right. It was very good, I think, the perk test. And this is actually, we did it for six bedrooms, even, I don't think we have even six bedrooms in this house at the end. Because at that time, when we did it, was intend to have a single-family with an accessory.
Right. So we're basically, basically, the required, the maximum coverage under the code is 15%. We're at 36.6, so a little over twice, twice the area coverage.
Correct.
And the lot size is a little smaller, so like trying to offset those two things, that makes that percent coverage.
Correct, yeah.
Is the 36.6 a percentage of the .93 acres or is it?
It's percentage of the .93 acres, correct. It's basically, it includes everything, includes the driveway, the existing driveway, the concrete patio in the front. You can see there's a huge concrete patio in the front of the house, includes all the walkways in the rear, includes, I think it includes the pound also, includes the deck, includes the pool, the pool building, whatever, the new driveway, everything, every single detail.
Okay. And the existing asphalt driveway is, would be staying?
That's what we want to, the reason is because the, actually, the guy who lives there, the owner of the property, is the fire chief, the village of Kirill Joel. There's sometimes he's coming, he has the truck next to his eyes for short periods of time, so he has the, this is a large enough driveway, so he can have it sometimes there.
Stop home for lunch.
Yeah, basically, not park it on the road.
So just to clarify some of the figures again, so the, with the proposed addition, right?
Yes.
The lot coverage is moving to what percentage?
To, what?
36.6. So that's the proposed.
That's the total of the proposed. So it's, so we are adding up about 14%.
Pavement counts.
Pavement counts, yes. There's a problem.
So that's not accounting for the pavement? That's accounting for solely the structure of the?
No, this account, this is also including the pavement. It includes everything.
I believe it includes any impermeable surface.
Any previous surface, yes. That's what the zoning said now. I think this was also something was changed, but I'm not sure.
I just have a little plan, but do you have a signed, sealed version of this, I assume? Must be what you've got in front of you.
I don't have it here signed and sealed, but it's by the building department, actually, but I can certainly supply the board. Others, one?
That's the plan I have with the applications.
Got it, okay.
Is that signed and sealed?
It's not signed.
Signed and sealed, okay, but I can have this signed and sealed. We have this by the building department signed and sealed, I can get more copies.
Okay. What I'm wrestling with is the amount of coverage here and then the fact that, you know, there's really no other place, and there may be other concerns as well, but, you know, with the leach field there, there's not a lot of room for anything to go wrong.
Right, yeah, but still.
And, you know.
Which, as you can see, we just, in fact, we're just adding 14% of coverage for this addition in total. The existing house already with a pool, with a driveway, with a concrete, everything is already over.
So the total lot, the total lot area, and that's where it's non-conforming, is under the 40,000?
It's now, it's 40,000.
29.3, it's supposed to be one acre.
40,000, one acre is 43,560.
It's changed between, because it used to be 40,000, so all the, I'm assuming that all the lots were then created in conjunction with the original zoning, so they were all just over 40,000.
Correct.
But now it was changed to one acre instead of 40,000, even though people think of that as the same, it's not.
I raised that question while the zoning changed, but somehow, I don't know, they didn't address that. Now, it's a big problem because all the lots in that area are now non-conforming.
They're in that just over 40, but just under 43,650.
Basically, there are a couple lots were over, out-shaped lots were over, but most of the lots are 40 and a debt.
Unfortunately, we got to stick with the new zoning.
I understand, yeah.
But just, I mean, I don't want to lose that historical context either, so adding buildings, all the impervious surfaces right now are 36.6% of a .93-acre lot. Again, previously, not that it really matters, but I'm just, previously, under the R1 zoning, with a 40,000-foot lot, you had, you were allowed up to 40% coverage.
Correct.
Okay. I still, regardless, I mean, if I was looking at this, I'd be going, wow, you really don't have much room for the leach field to go on.
Yeah, well, you can see that we have on the right side, a lot of space. The reason we didn't did it on the right side is because of the, this is basically the play area of that property. And the other thing is we did a couple of perk tests. This area worked the best for the leach field.
Also, the lower side, we look on elevation.
So that's that area up to the, to the north, that upper triangle there, that's a grassy area?
That's a grassy area. Actually, you can see there's a lot of, we'll be removing some trees, but there is a lot of nice trees there where we try, actually, the owner wants to maintain.
But you got your well right pretty close there, so that's.
It's existing, the well stays.
Right, but I mean, you wouldn't be able, if you ever had to move your leach field, it would.
Oh, right, yeah. No, I cannot move the leach field. Just the point that we're going to try to keep the most trees possible in the front. There is some in the middle of the concrete patio even. It's nice, they like it. It's very, you will see, it's a well-maintained property, this. They lived there since, I think, 2010, I don't remember, I think the deed, 2012 or something like that.
I noticed that the plan that you submitted, I got two questions on it. One is that it says sheet one of two. Is there, is there another plan that goes with it that we don't have?
Yes, it has all the septic details and.
Details, okay.
Yeah, there is another detail sheet.
And then the other, and the other question I have is the last revised, January 22, 2018, it says, indicated on drawing patio and driveway to remain. Was there a thought at some point to take it out and then it was added back in or something?
This was, Ben told me, when I submitted for Ben, he told me, you need to, it doesn't say nothing, so it was just existing asphalt. So he told me, put on the note to remain, so that way he will address that in this letter, in the denial letter.
I see.
He just told me to get it clear, so what are you keeping, what are you remaining, so it was based on his comment.
Okay, anything else on this?
Mike, you have any thoughts?
Um, yeah, just a couple of questions, I mean, number one, this, to me, seems like it's, it's not a completely accurate map again. And, we're talking about 20 or 30% impervious coverage, meanwhile, the lot is completely paved. It says on here, batuminous concrete parking area, there's no edge or limits to that, so, so, you know, we're really probably talking about 100% impervious on this site. Also, the fence on this site extends out beyond the boundary of the property, so you have encroachments. This map doesn't show it, but I looked at Google Maps, and the Google Maps...
This is the bus garage.
Yeah, you know, it, it, it's not clear, I think that needs to be clarified, where is the...
This is a different job.
You talk about different map, you're not looking at the plan.
Oh, oh, this is 55,700. We got too many papers in front of us.
This is the next item on the agenda. Yeah. First, I want to make sure this is an accurate, updated map, it's not like from 2011 and altered.
This is in addition to existing property, Joe?
What?
This is in exist, this is in addition to this existing property, is that what it's being...
Yeah, so here's the original, this is what he's building.
What's the square footage of this?
Yeah, oh. Yeah, this, that's a square footage.
That's not the square footage.
Oh.
So, um, basement floor, no, basement floor, first floor, second floor, foundation.
Okay, okay, I was gonna say, 802 isn't very much.
Yeah, the, the maximum lot coverage allowed is 15%, which turns out to be about 6,000 square feet. What they're asking for is 34%, which turns out to be about 13,000 square feet, so you're asking for a variance two and a half times what's allowed.
Right.
You know?
But 15, Mike, is it 15% based off of SR10 or, or R1?
SR10.
SR10.
And that's, that's what we gotta...
Without central sewer.
Without central sewer, right.
Not, okay, I just...
But with central sewer, it's 25, I think it's 25%.
And with, without, it's 40%, I thought I saw on the code.
For, the, on the old code.
40% was the old.
Old code.
When it was SR1, the lot, the minute, the lot size was 40,000, and the amount of impervious coverage was 40%, but now, this is become SR10, and, and that, that has made it so, the minimum lot should be one acre, so that's, we're, it's short on that, and then, the pervious, impervious coverage is a percentage of the stroke.
So, um...
This is...
Okay. The, the other question I have is, with the proposed septic area, it seems to be only 120 feet from a well that's downhill, that should be reviewed to make sure that that's sufficient, because the requirements are 200 feet downhill from a septic system. There is some allowances for reducing that distance if it's offset, but that should be checked.
It's actually, it's not, the, well is not downhill, it's the, almost the same level, a little bit higher.
Downhill, I mean, I'm only looking at the map.
According to the engineer, it's a little bit higher, because when the septic is higher than the well, then you need 200 feet.
I'm not talking about your well, I'm talking about the well on the Hersch lot to the south.
This is lower, the road is going down.
Yeah, it's sloping down in that direction, so I, I just question that.
Okay.
And, and it seems like it's a big ask in terms of impervious cover, you know, this is how you get into the urbanization of a, you know, rural area, you, you start taking, you know, what should be 15%, and you push it up to 35%, and, and that, that's a big difference on what's going on in the lot.
Maybe a lot more runoff than...
Yeah.
This, this field, this leach field is, is proposed, is not existing?
This is proposed, existing one is in the front of the building, like, where, where approximately where the parking lot is, the new driveway, proposed driveway, somehow that area.
It looks like it says the existing septic is, sort of, right under the back of the new proposed house, right, it says existing septic system to be abandoned, approximate location?
Okay.
If you look at the note that's just underneath where it says in-ground pool, you'll see the note existing septic, and then you can follow the...
Yeah, you're right, and there is a cloud around.
There's a cloud, yeah.
Yep.
So it overlaps the proposed building?
Correct. So it's actually not getting closer to the well, it's getting more away from this well.
Yeah, but the use is getting much larger, going from a small house to a tremendous house, so, you know, the occupancy...
It's not tremendous, it's a big size of house.
It's how many square feet?
The total, the footprint, is about 3,000. That's very similar to a lot of houses in this area.
And how many stories is it?
That's basement and two stories, like, as, as allowed, with the height, that's basically, the building inspector looked on it, it complies with everything.
Well, that's, that's really my, my big, my two concerns with the application, is that the, the extent of the impervious area that's being proposed, without any offsetting drainage mitigation, is one, and the other is the proximity of the proposed septic system to the existing wells downhill from the property, and I would recommend that that get reviewed by the town engineer, for code compliance, sanitary code.
Okay, we're gonna, this is just for discussion, and we're not gonna vote on this tonight.
So basically, just to summarize, because what is the board's concern, we should try to come back the, the next month.
Like, you know, I think, what, what Mike was mentioning, the proximity to the off-site wells, and the, and the fact that, I'm trying to think, is it, it actually is down, downhill towards those, towards those off-site wells, the, having the town engineer weigh in on that. I mean, to me, like, the big issue here too, is the amount of coverage, I mean, the lot coverage is, is big, I'm, I'm wondering too, about how is stormwater managed out here, I mean, is it just going to ditches along the side of the road versus an engineered sewer?
The, what is the procedure to get this plan into the town engineer? Asking, just asking the board.
What's that?
Let's say, what is the procedure to get this plan in, submit it to the town engineer for review? Let's say, if we want to do it still before and have time to get his comments, and maybe address it before the next meeting.
I, I don't know that there's a formal procedure, but I think you just, you talk to the building inspector, and there can be a referral there from this board, or just go contact them.
We have an open escrow, I think we have an open escrow account here, so I don't know if that's...
Yes, that, yeah, I think that would apply.
Okay.
Building inspector can reach out to him and ask him all these questions.
Would we have him come here?
You could, you, you could ask him to come here.
Who, the town engineer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, I mean, I didn't mean to...
Next up, what I think would be to set it for a public hearing, I think it's, I think the application is otherwise complete, it's just a matter of doing a public hearing and having it properly noticed, and...
Right.
And so on.
So the question is, can the board now schedule a public hearing for the next month?
I believe they can, if they see fit.
We can schedule for the next month's meeting.
Okay.
Next one, agenda is Monroe Bus, section Black Lot, 1-2-11.12. Excuse me, everybody, I have to excuse myself, I gotta leave.
Basically, I'm not here actually for something serious, I, I don't, it's, since it's got late, I will not hold off the board too long, I will make it very short for the next one. This is the Monroe Bus, we was here before the board for a variance, but actually, this, the history, I think the board knows a little bit, the history, was presented last time with engineer, was a variance granted for a bus parking, it was in the residential zoning URM, actually, at that time. In fact, the town changed the zoning, we petitioned the town board, and with that zoning change, they changed, they changed this to LI for commercial, so now, it's a permitted use, so probably, we don't need, we don't need to use variance anymore, it will possibly only be a 80 variance for some things that we are still discussing with engineer, and we'll be in contact with the planning board, and we'll be back as, with the, and change the application, the application as necessary.
So that all changed to LI?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah, they did that.
Okay.
So, now things are easier.
Yes.
No, it makes sense, if you see the, the location of the property, there is whole parking lots on this whole strip.
This there, just...
Between the road and the 17...
Just north of the Quickway.
Quickway, yes, and there's like...
And there's another parking lot, new parking lot for...
Village parking lot, village of Cajun, then there's other public safety, and minibus bar, everything is on this strip, so it's...
So, so what's your current status, are you before the planning board?
We are going, now, going back to the planning board, we'll see what variances possibly will lead, and we'll come back and revise the application as near it.
I'd like to make a motion to close tonight's hearing.
I say, we're not gonna look at the minutes, I guess.
We'll do it for next one.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.